Then they could access everything, and so I have to do it as separate. And so trying to navigate it all is.
Adrianne Brightfelder, City Clerk. You are hereby directed to call a regular session of the City Council to be held on Monday, May 6, 2024, at 6:30 PM in the historic Federal Building for the purpose of conducting such business that may properly come before the City Council.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to a regular session of the Dubuque City Council for May 6, 2024. As a reminder to our participants, you can provide in-person input or virtual audio and written input during the sections of the agenda where public input is accepted. Input options during the live meeting include: In-person attendees may approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any public input on the item they would like to speak to. Remote attendees can log into GoToMeeting using the login links, phone numbers, and access code that appear on the broadcast and livestream and posted on the front page of the meeting agenda. This option includes audio input and written chat input. If you are participating via computer, indicate which item you would like to speak to in the chat function, or note that you would like to speak during the appropriate section. If you are participating via phone, indicate which item you would like to speak to during the appropriate section. All comments, whether in-person or virtual, must be accompanied by a name and address. Additionally, written public input is accepted by contacting the City Council directly from the city's webpage at www.cityofdubuque.org/councilcontacts and through the City Clerk's Office email at ctyclerk@cityofdubuque.org. This information will be reiterated during the meeting. Attendance for the session is as follows: Mayor Kavanaugh, Councilmembers Farber, Jones, Resnick, Rousell, Sprank, Wethel, City Manager Van Milligan, and City Attorney Brumwell. Thank you. Mayor Kavanaugh, I will turn it over to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Adrian. I invite all who are able to please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unarrested and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For proclamations, our first proclamation is Neighborhood Association Recognition.
Okay, it is proclamation evening here tonight, so we have a few. We get to celebrate with quite a few community members, so please come on up.
I'm Sandy Plumlee from the President of the Point Neighborhood Association. This is my secretary, Robin Kenniker, and we're glad to be here.
Great, wonderful. Would you like to say anything about the proclamation before we, before I read it?
No, you can. Yeah, we want to let you know that we are so happy to have all of our board members supporting us all these years, and also the team effort in the whole Point of an area giving us suggestions, ideals, and then for us to reroute the grants, Sandy approves them, we send them out to the, to the share prosperity, to the City Council, and you approve them all, and it works out very well. They can't hear me, trust me, they can. But it works out very well, and we can't thank everybody enough for all the grant support and for all the activities we do, and we have a blast doing it, so thank you all.
Yes, we do.
Hillary Dalton, representing for the Historic Washington Neighborhood, and expressing thanks to the many representatives who have gone before all of us for these historic neighborhoods. Hard to put a dollar sign on the amount of volunteer activity in our community and all of the good works that so many have, are responsible for. So it's a time for many of us to be celebrating that can't be here this evening. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much for being here this evening and for all the work that you and everyone does for the neighborhood associations, and of course, for being here to accept the proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque has fostered a culture that encourages residents to establish neighborhood associations, fostering a sense of neighborhood pride with homeowners, landlords, and tenants taking responsibility for appearance and safety. And whereas neighborhood associations are organized and led by residents who volunteer their time, talent, and treasure to make Dubuque a better place to live, work, and play. And whereas neighborhood associations represent a collective of dedicated residents living in close proximity who share a desire to create a neighborhood identity and encourage engagement among neighbors and those dedicated to their neighborhood. And whereas the establishment of neighborhood associations provides a remarkable avenue for residents to connect with one another, leverage city grant funding and resources to enhance neighborhood amenities, and serve as advocates for the well-being of their neighborhood. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby acknowledge and celebrate the contributions of all neighborhood associations to the betterment of our neighborhood and overall community.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, we still, we have some other neighborhood.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you very much for noticing, Mike. Yeah, my apologies. Please, come on up. If you'd like to say any words, please, feel free. Yeah. I thought you were waiting for the next proclamation over on the side. I apologize. Yeah, please go.
Catherine Sorensen, I'm representing North End Neighborhood Association. I was just like delegated. So we are making improvements and we are moving forward. Comiskey Park was great for the neighborhood, and it's brought us out, so we're able to do more with the neighborhood. We're brainstorming, we're bringing it back to the table, but the North End is going to be pulling up a little bit more within the next year or two. So look forward to hearing from us more.
Great, thank you.
I'm Sherri Kubli, and the President of Bluff Street Association, and this is my first year as being president, and I'm learning a lot, and I love going to the city meetings and learning about all the things that these guys have been doing, because I'm like making lots of notes, and I love the grant money that we get from the city, because we're going to really make things happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri.
Hi, I'm Taya Dement, and I'm an at-large person at the Langworthy Neighborhood Association, and I just want to say thank you very much for the proclamation and for everything that the city does to help the neighborhoods and make them wonderful for the city. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Taya.
I'm one of the old timers. We've lived downtown for 52 years and lived and helped with the Neighborhood Association for 25. My name is Joe Knoll, and I was, I'm the retired president of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. And while I had a long presentation to make, but I just wanted to share one story why we think, and I see the importance of immigrants and the young people getting involved. And the story is that we have a little park along Bluff Street, and last fall I was pulling weeds out, I'm sorry if I'm doing that, anyway, pulling weeds out, and, and I was getting, it was hot. Well, we have, we have an Afghan family that lives right in our neighborhood, and so while I was pulling the weeds out, four young, well, four teenagers and secondary school kids came out of their, their house, their apartment, and came down, and they had their cricket bat. And I said, hey, I'll give you five bucks if you, it's hot, if you'll help me. And they all said, and even a little 10-year-old said, no money, no money, and they did it without any prompting of anybody. And so I was so impressed with it, and they worked there for an hour, and then they turned around and went down and played their cricket. And so this is why we, we call, what I call, our, our neighborhood, it's a rainbow neighborhood with lots and lots of angels who walk the streets and work there. And we try all work together to make a, it's a better place for everybody. And for those of us, we are all dreamers. We grew up in a dreamer generation, and our favorite, my wife's favorite song was, I'm sorry, let's see, but anyway, I'm sorry, I guess I'm nervous. But anyway, the whole idea is that you, you follow your dreams, and you, and sometimes you hit snags, but you always go for it. And so what I found out is that all the, the staff and the city departments and, and the City Council have all been great to help support our dreams. And we had our problems with the housing and the poor enforcement and the bad landlords. And I remember we had a Safe Community Task Force, which brought everybody together, and they got the community business leaders involved, and because the neighbors said enough is enough. We can't put up with this stuff, because there was no, no support, no, no enforcement of, of, of housing codes and stuff like that. And so we met, we drew up some regulations, and we brought them to the City Council. There were souls that didn't like, they didn't want any more restrictions. Some of the landlords didn't like that. And I remember you, Rick, saying enough is enough. We are going to go ahead with you. So they, they go ahead and went ahead and presented the, the recommendations, and we had new leadership, and we started enforcing things, and, and then we had, what we like about our neighborhood is that we have citizens from all over the world, immigrants, we've had the marshalleys there, and I, I kind of miss them. They, they lived in the house, apartment next to us, and they used to sit in the parking lot right next to our kitchen window, about from me to you away. And they would sit there after work, and they would sit and talk and have their beer and laugh and play songs. And I love their, their island songs, and they were, and they would sing them and play them. But they, because of the COVID, it really hurt them bad. But, but anyway, so I miss them, but we've had so many good folks that have helped. We have one lady who is from Vinsola. She's an immigrant, I'm an immigrant from Muscatine, by the way. I'm a domestic immigrant, so I'm not from Dubuque, but I really probably appreciate more what the Dubuque people have here and the programs they have than those that actually live in Dubuque. I mean, they do a fantastic job. Everything, it's a little slow to getting started sometimes, because it takes a while, but once you get going, it really starts rolling. I look at the B-branch, so many programs that have been started and completed, and the B-branch, I used to work for Molusand, I'm sorry if I'm talking too long, but, but I used to work for Molusand, and we'd haul sand out of the pack down there, and there was a concrete or a brick storm sewer down there, and that's why, because it wasn't very big, they had storm. But I remember seeing carcasses of hogs that had gotten away and got out, and they got them. But when they opened that up and they, and you made the B-branch, a reel back to its original design as a cricket, that's just so fantastic. It's really a work of art, and I compliment everybody who has done that. So, but anyway, we're just, we're happy, and our goal is always to help young people and the Dream Center and all, so that everybody, to dream the impossible dream, that's the one I, anyway, and it's all about, no matter how hopeless, no matter how far, I will dream the impossible dream until I reach the unreachable star. And so all these programs and all the agencies, and I, and there's a lot on there working, and so they, they are actually helping the young people and, and all ages really to dream their impossible dream, something they never thought they would ever do. And so they, and that's why I'm so proud of what's been done. So, anyway, one of the things that our Neighborhood Association is, we've had leaders over the years, and I compare it to, we have, we have flocks of geese that fly over our house, you know, with the V shape, and the leaders are like the geese that lay the, that, that lead the V. And when the first, when the leader falls back, another one comes right up, and that's just where, and so that's what I've done. I've retired, and so I'm falling back and watching, and there's some, and we have, there's a new cliff, Conrad is the new head of the Downtown Neighborhood Association. So he needs your support, and you all have been doing, I know you're going to do a great job. So thank you so much for all the work you have done, and we do really appreciate it. Our neighborhood is, is like, is great. They had a rooted table. We used to have crimes and drugs and stuff, but when they had a rooted table last year, or two years ago, there were 500 people, well, I think 500, but they had all this, the whole, the whole park was full of fancy tables and tablecloths and, and dinnerware and drinks and everything else. And I was so impressed with that, because that was what our dream would have been. So everybody that volunteered and helped, that was all part of the dream project. So we still dream the dream. My wife and I are, I'm 80, my wife's 77, and we've still got plans to go. So we, we dreamed the impossible dream, no matter how hopeless and no matter how far, but someday we'll reach that unreachable star. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm sitting here with these proclamations if anybody wants to come get them. And thank you all. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Okay, our next proclamation is Building Safety Month, and Tom Townsend is here to accept this proclamation.
Good evening. Tom Townsend, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, and all the city staff for having me here tonight. I'm here on behalf of the Building Code Advisory and Appeals Board to accept the safety proclamation. I think all of you that know me know, you know, I'm the chairman of the Dubuque Federation of Labor, and last week we, we had our workers' memorial, remembering all the people that were killed on, on the job in the state of Iowa in the last year. As I said in the paper, the day I'll quit harping on it is the day that there is nobody on that list, but we haven't gotten close yet. But I do appreciate the efforts of the Building Services Department to make building safety better in the City of Dubuque. It is definitely, you know, improving. I look back at when I got in the apprenticeship and where we are today, it's night and day, and a lot of that is due to the hard work of you folks and your staff. I just really like to say thanks again, and I, and I really do appreciate the efforts to make Dubuque a safer place to live. Thank you.
Tom, thank you very much, and you've been a tireless advocate, so thank you for all the work that you have done over the years. We really appreciate it. And thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the City of Dubuque is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and essential role our homes, buildings, and infrastructure play, both in everyday life and when disasters strike. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, including housing and building inspectors, fire marshals, architects, engineers, builders, electricians, plumbers, and others in the construction industry, who work year-round to ensure the safe design, construction, and occupation of buildings. And whereas, these guardians are dedicated to continually expanding their knowledge to provide guidance and implementation of quality codes to protect us in the buildings where we live, learn, work, and play. And whereas, these modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as building deterioration and decay, snowstorms, tornadoes, wind damage, fires, and floods. And whereas, Building Safety Month reminds the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local inspectors and code officials, who assure us of safe, sustainable, and affordable buildings that are essential to our prosperity. And whereas, Mission Possible, the theme for Building Safety Month 2024, encourages us all to raise awareness about building safety on a personal, local, and global scale. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, people all over the world are asked to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local building, engineering, planning, and fire departments in protecting lives and property. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Building Safety Month. Okay, next up, we have Mental Health Month, and Vicki Gassman, I believe, is here to accept this proclamation.
Hello, thank you. My name is Vicki.
Vicki, you can pull that down there.
Thank you. My name is Vicki Gassman. I brought with me our vice president, Brenna Burkhardt. And on behalf of the Mental Health America County, of Dubuque County Board, we thank you for your long support of mental health in the Dubuque area. Mental Health America National started back in 1909, with 1957 is when our board came, our volunteer board came into existence. Since then, we offer Facebook postings, monthly newsletters, scholarships for kids, support the 988 Crisis Line, bring in educational events, and our support of our young persons in Dubuque County with mental health crisis and so forth. So we do thank you for your long support and invite you to celebrate with us May as Mental Health Awareness Month, and in attending our May dinner on May 16, where we have silent auction that helps to support all of the advocacy that we do, including a online free anonymous assessment that people can go online, just check out and see how they're feeling, what they're doing, offering additional resources. Nationally, since the inception of that, we have served over 50 million people since that came into existence, with last year alone serving 6 million people. So we're looking to bring that a little bit more locally as well. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much. I mean, that was great information to share with us, too. We really appreciate you being here to tell us more about it. Appreciate the work you're doing, and thanks for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas for over 60 years, Mental Health America has brought together mental health providers, consumers, family members, advocates, and concerned citizens to serve as an effective voice for mental health in this area. And whereas, mental health is, is an essential part of overall well-being, impacting individuals, families, and communities across Dubuque County. And whereas, one in five American adults experiences a mental health condition each year, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact their mental health. And whereas, despite its prevalence, mental health remains shrouded in stigma, preventing many from seeking help. And whereas, early intervention and access to quality care are crucial for managing mental health conditions and improving quality of life. And whereas, May is recognized nationally as Mental Health Awareness Month, providing an opportunity to raise awareness, combat stigma, and promote mental health resources. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Mental Health Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and call upon residents, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the Dubuque area to recommit our community, our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health, challenge stigmas surrounding mental health, seek help for themselves, and to create supportive environments for others. Okay, next is the National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month, and I'm actually going to be the one to accept this proclamation. This is a proclamation that's connected to the National League of Cities, and we are members as a city of the National League of Cities. Individually, there are several of us actually on this council who have been able to get very active within the National League of Cities as well as the Iowa League of Cities. And it's an important organization for us as Dubuque. It's an important connection that we have with other elected officials and other city staff workers throughout the entire country. So we're celebrating this month with this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas the National League of Cities was founded in 1924 in Lawrence, Kansas, as the American Municipal Association by state municipal leagues seeking more coordination and national representation as cities, towns, and villages, expanded rapidly. And whereas, the nonpartisan National League of Cities is the oldest and largest organization representing municipal governments throughout the United States, representing the interests of more than 19,000 cities, towns, and villages across the country. And whereas, today, the National League of Cities works in partnership with 49 state municipal leagues across the country to strengthen local leadership, drive innovation, and influence the federal policies that impact local programs and operations. And whereas, as the voice of cities, towns, and villages in Washington, DC, the National League of Cities has successfully championed federal legislative solutions that support municipalities and has worked closely with Congress and the executive branch to educate policymakers on the realities of local implementation. And whereas, Dubuque, Iowa is a proud member of the National League of Cities and has benefited from the organization's research, technical expertise, federal advocacy, and opportunities to learn from other local governments. And whereas, local governments are the bedrock of American democracy, providing 336 million residents, the most accountable, responsive, inclusive, ethical, and transparent government in the world. And whereas, from the nation's smallest villages to its largest cities, America's local governments have been essential in transforming the United States of America into the greatest, most influential nation in world history. And whereas, Dubuque, Iowa was first incorporated in 1837 and is proudly served today by a mayor and six city council members and a municipal workforce of over 700 dedicated public servants. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as National Cities, Towns, and Villages Month in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, in celebration of America's local governments and the National League of Cities' historic centennial anniversary. Okay, next up is Preservation Month, and Taya Dement is back with us again.
Hello again. Good evening, Mayor and the City Council. Again, I am Taya Dement. I am the vice chairperson of the Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, and I just want to thank you for letting me be here tonight. I think it's fitting, because May is Historic Preservation Month, and today's also the beginning of Architecture Days here in Dubuque. We have a full week of lots of events, and I just encourage everybody to go out and see that. And we will have our awards, which I'll talk about more later tonight. That award ceremony will be on Wednesday, May 8, at 6:00 PM at the Dubuque Historic, or, sorry, the Lucy Mansion, 1640 Main Street. And I would just like to thank you and take the time to thank you for your continued support of historic preservation. The city has been wonderful with the financial support for the surveys that we've been able to conduct, including the Black Heritage Survey, and then also the National Register listings that open properties up for historic tax credit opportunities, your support of financial incentives to rehabilitate our buildings, our many historic buildings in Dubuque, and many more. And you really can't say Dubuque without placing historic in front of that. So we really just continue to appreciate the City Council's support in making Dubuque a wonderful place to live and work and play. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Taya, for all the work that you do, and that everyone does when it comes to historic preservation in Dubuque, and thanks for being here tonight to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation: Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for telling a more complete story of our community, fostering local pride, revitalizing neighborhoods, managing growth, creating sustainable communities, and enhancing livability. And whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for residents of all ages and backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that is, has shaped us as a people. And whereas, the city honors preservation efforts annually through the Ken Kringle Historic Preservation Awards, in partnership with the Dubuque County Historic Preservation Commission and Dubuque Main Street, taking place on May 8 this year. And whereas, Preservation Month, celebrating the theme "People Saving Places," and sponsored by the City of Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, is an opportunity for the community to celebrate the people who are preserving our history and architecture that is significant to our community's past and future. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 as Preservation Month in the City of Dubuque, calling upon our residents to join fellow residents across the United States in recognizing and participating in this special observance. Thank you. Okay, and next we have Public Service Recognition Week.
I am Jenny Messrich with the Employee Appreciation Committee, and I have Felicia Carner here with me. And we just want to say, the work of the City of Dubuque begins with our people. We are engineers, IT specialists, lab technicians, emergency responders, mechanics, drivers, attorneys, and more. We all bring our talents and dedication together for one purpose, to serve our community. We are grateful to have an opportunity to celebrate the work of staff and to celebrate Public Service Recognition Week with an employee appreciation event scheduled for this Thursday, May 9, at 8:00 AM. Thank you to the mayor and council for this proclamation.
Well, thank you for being here to accept it, and I'm so glad that we Well, thank you for being here to accept it, and I'm so glad that we take the time to make sure that we celebrate all the public servants who work for this community. So thank you very much for being the ones who put the extra work into that celebration. We really appreciate that, and looking forward to the celebration this week. City Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, Americans, including the nearly 60,000 residents of Dubuque, are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our community and nation working. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs but oaths to serve their communities. And whereas, many public servants risk their lives each day in service to their communities. And whereas, day in and day out, all city staff provide diverse services to create a more viable, livable, and equitable and resilient community. And whereas, public service employees in Dubuque are composed of many individuals respected for their ability, professionalism, and commitment to doing the best job possible. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff, residents, and staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 5th through the 11th, 2024, as Public Service Recognition Week. And we continue on. Salvation Army Week is up next.
Good evening. The Salvation Army would like to say thank you for this proclamation. We are honored. My wife and I have been here for just about two years now, but we know that we're just a small part of the over 125 years that Dubuque and the Salvation Army have partnered together to try to bring help to those in need. We provide other services. This week alone, if you read the news, we've had the tornadoes out in the west in Iowa. We've served over 100 families out there. So we are helping as many people as we can. Here recently, we've helped some families that have had some fires. We put them up. So we do many, many things. We also like to have fun with the community, and one of the things that we're doing at the end of this week is we're having our canned movie festival. We're working with the Phoenix Theater on Saturday, and we're going to rate, we're going to collect cans of food for our food pantry, and everyone that comes in and brings seven cans, we'll get a ticket for a movie. Doesn't matter how many cans you bring in, we'll give you the amount of tickets that you need for it. We're just happy to be here. We thank the community for working with us, for being able to provide the funds and the volunteers that we need to make things happen.
Well, thank you, and this community sincerely appreciates the Salvation Army and the partnership that you have with everyone here, and especially with the City of Dubuque. So thank you very much for being here to accept this proclamation tonight. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, the Salvation Army operates more than 7,500 centers in communities across the United States, including Dubuque, Iowa. And whereas, the highly spiritual and humanitarian role of the Salvation Army has long been an important part of American life. And whereas, the Salvation Army of Dubuque has served the community for over 135 years. And whereas, this week of recognition was first declared by President Dwight D. Eisenhower in 1954, 74 years after the Salvation Army arrived in the United States, who stated in his proclamation, "Among Americans, the Salvation Army has long been a symbol of wholehearted dedication to the cause of human brotherhood. Their work has been a constant reminder to us all that each of us is neighbor and kin to all Americans, giving freely of themselves. The men and women of the Salvation Army have won the respect of us all." And whereas, through its welfare and religious institutions in the country, the Salvation Army has befriended, aided, and given new hope to men, women, and children regardless of race or creed. And whereas, the Salvation Army of Dubuque provides services to the community through its client-choice food pantry, mobile food pantry, senior activities, student activities, summer fun program, Christmas food and toy program for children, church, emergency disaster services, and the National Pathway of Hope Program, which guides residents to achieve sustainable lives. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 6th through the 12th of May 2024 as National Salvation Army Week. Our next proclamation is Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Jason Duba. I'm a member of the city's Planning Services Department. This is my daughter Abby. She's a first grader at Lincoln Elementary. I coordinate the Safe Routes to School partnership between the City of Dubuque, Dubuque Community School District, Holy Family Catholic Schools, and Iowa Bicycle Coalition. And we're just encouraging students and families to join us this Wednesday, May 8th, to walk, bike, or roll to school. Even if you live too far to walk all that way, and you drive, maybe try parking a couple blocks from a school and avoiding the congestion at the drop-off point, and just walking in those last couple blocks. It all makes a difference. And Abby and I will be out there at Lincoln.
Well, Jason and Abby, thank you very much for being here tonight to accept this proclamation and providing us an opportunity to think about what it means to walk, bike, or roll to school like this. So, thank you. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, walking, biking, and rolling to school are forms of active transportation that have numerous benefits, including physical health and mental well-being, improving student learning outcomes, reducing traffic congestion, increasing community connection, improving air quality, and lowering emissions. And whereas, results from the National Household Travel Survey show that in 1969, 48% of students in grades K through 8 walked or bicycled to school, but by 2017, that figure had fallen to 11%. And whereas, to ensure that students walking, biking, and rolling to school have a safe journey, the City of Dubuque is partnering with the Dubuque Community School District, Holy Family Catholic Schools, and the Safe Routes to School Manager from the Bicycle, Iowa Bicycle Coalition, and others, to make walking and biking to school even safer and easier. And whereas, Dubuque has sidewalks throughout the city, and schools have crossing guards ready to guide students safely onto school grounds. And whereas, students of all grades are encouraged to walk, bike, or roll to school on this special, nationally celebrated day. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the 8th of May 2024 as Walk, Bike, and Roll to School Day. Thanks, Jason. Okay, next up, Public Works Week.
Thank you. Ariel Swift, Public Works Director, and go ahead.
Guss Ahoye, City Engineer.
We are accepting this proclamation for Public Works Week, which is typically the last week, full weekend, May. And it's not just engineering and public works that it really covers. It's water resource and recovery, it's parks, it's HR who helps us on the backend and makes sure that we're continuously running and have the employees to run. It's finance and budget to give us the funding. I mean, it really is every city employee and community member. So, thank you.
Well, Ariel, thank you very much for all the work that you do, and Guss, you as well, and everyone who works in Public Works. I'm very glad that we have a week very dedicated to this really important department that we have. But good points. It's everybody that makes it all run, doesn't it? Absolutely. Well, thanks for being here to accept this proclamation. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, has been designated as National Public Works Week by the American Public Works Association with the theme "Advancing Quality for Life, of Life for All." To celebrate the vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the City of Dubuque via public works professionals' focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services. And whereas, these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, where engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our residents. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the residents, civic leaders, and children in the City of Dubuque to gain knowledge of and to maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, we recognize that the services provided by the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, where engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, and that the efficiency of personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2024, as Public Works Week. Well, you might have thought we were done, but I have one more, so I'm going to read it. City of Dubuque Proclamation. Whereas, Councilmember Rick Jones, having served the City of Dubuque with utmost dedication and commitment, reached a momentous 50 years of public service on February 8th, 2024. And whereas, Councilmember Jones began his public service with the city as a probationary firefighter/EMT in 1974, dedicating himself to the protection of life and property from loss by fire and other emergency situations. And whereas, Councilmember Jones served in many positions in the fire department, advancing to the roles of firefighter, acting ambulance driver and attendant, ambulance driver/attendant, ambulance medical officer, medical officer/acting lieutenant, fire captain EMS, and EMS supervisor. And whereas, after retirement from the fire department on August 12th, 2005, Councilmember Jones continued his public service by being elected City Council Member-at-Large in 2005, a position which he has held since. And whereas, the loyalty and dedication demonstrated by Councilmember Jones during his half-century of exemplary service stand as a testament to his unwavering commitment to the City of Dubuque and its residents, significantly contributing to the betterment of the community. Now therefore, I, Brad M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the City of Dubuque, Iowa, on behalf of the City Council's staff and residents of Dubuque, do hereby recognize and commend Rick Jones for 50 years of service in the City of Dubuque, Iowa, and thank Member Jones for his remarkable commitment to our masterpiece on the Mississippi.
Well, that was a ton of fun, as have been the last 50 years, working for this wonderful organization. Thank you, thank you, Adrian. I was wondering what you're doing on our caller ID on Sue's phone. Because that was unexpected, as was this. So, thank you all very, very much.
Well, it is hard to keep a secret in a public meeting, isn't it? But I saw a few friends sneak in here, the back. Former Mayor Buell, very nice to see you, sir, and nice to see you, Deb and Sue, of course. Thank you very much for being here. You know, I'll just say a few words here, and then we can go ahead and get rolling, because I know you just want to get to work, Mr. Jones. But, you know, it, this is, you know, when I heard that you had served for 50 years in this city, I was just so incredibly impressed. You know, I, of all the people that I've met in this role, that I now get the honor to serve in, I particularly appreciate your voice in this process, and I'm so thankful that you're here. I'm learning from you every day, and I really appreciate knowing the history that you bring to this role, and all the things that you've learned through all those different roles that you've played, that we just read about. And I sincerely thank you for your service. So, thank you very much. Well, it's fun to have parties and do all these fun things. We've read all these nice proclamations. We have a lot of work to do yet tonight, so we'll go ahead and get to work.
We will move on to consent items. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the consent items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input, and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Please state the item you would like removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and consideration. And consent items can be found on pages 2 through 6 of the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have anyone who would like to remove any of the consent items for separate discussion this evening? I see no one here in chambers, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
Nothing from the clerk's office? Bring it back to the table, then, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Sprank.
Number 21 I'd like to pull for discussion.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Resnick.
I move to receive and file the documents, adopt the resolutions, and deal with the consent items as recommended, except for number 21.
Second by Farber.
We've got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. Move on to number 21, Mr. Sprank.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I see Mr. Mike Belmont is here, if he wants to give us a little community update about what's all been going on. I'm sure there's been enough discussion in the TH, but I'm sure folks would like to know the process continuing, so, thank you.
And I should have said, I apologize, number 21, just for the sake of everyone knowing, is the 3000 Jackson to be brewing and molting project update, so.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mike Belmont, Assistant Housing Director. As we all know, the building was mostly demolished last week. There are a couple of buildings that are still remaining. I met with the, an engineer from WHKS last Thursday morning. Myself, the demolition contractor, and the engineer met to look at the two buildings that are remaining, not counting the 3040 building that is going to remain. But there's a bridge between 3040 and 3000 Jackson. We looked at that. It was determined, the engineer sent a letter on Saturday morning to determine that that structure should be demolished. And then we looked at the structure that is remaining at the east side on 30th Street. And the structural engineer's recommendation is that portions of that also be demolished. And so a letter was sent out to Mr. Emerson today with that information, letting him know what the expectations are, that demolition continues, that the debris on Jackson Street and 30th Street is removed and taken to a site either internally on-site, or he's actively looking for other locations to store materials to process for salvage.
Yeah, a couple more. What was his timeline on that and possible street opening, reopening?
So we, the demolition activities that we've outlined, we gave him a timeline of the end of next week, actually Monday, the, whatever next Monday is. So he's got about a week to finish that up. And then the end of July for salvage operations, to get everything done. Now, the streets, we anticipate the streets will be open, should be open sometime next week, as long as he has a place to move the salvage materials.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Resnick.
I would like to move to receive and file number 21.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick, second by Farber. Anybody else a chance to discuss anything? Okay. Then Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
That motion passes 7-0. And thank you, Mike. I forgot to say thank you before you were able to sit down.
We will move on to items set for public hearing. We have 10. First is resolution setting a public hearing on a proposed development agreement between the City of Dubuque, Iowa and Wilstein House Apartments LLC, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement for May 20th, 2024. Second is setting a public hearing for the 2024 pavement marking project for May 20th, 2024. Third is setting a public hearing for the Tamarack Sewer, sanitary sewer extension project for May 20th, 2024. Fourth is setting a public hearing for the Twin Ridge Sanitary Sewer Extension and Lagoon Abandonment Project for May 20th, 2024. Fifth is setting a public hearing on the Granger Creek Lift Station Improvements for May 20th, 2024. Sixth is setting a public hearing for the North Grandview Avenue Pavement Rehabilitation Project for May 20th, 2024. Seventh is Eagle Valley, Westbrook, and English Ridge Subdivision Parks Development Project, initiate public improvement bidding process, and set public hearing for May 20th, 2024. Eighth is set public hearing for disposition of city-owned property at 2601 Jackson Street for May 20th, 2024. Ninth is set public hearing for the fiscal year 2024 second budget amendment for May 20th, 2024. And 10th is setting a public hearing for the Jules Iowa Department of Transportation's Consolidated Funding for June 17th, 2024.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rousell.
I move to receive and file, adopt the resolutions, and set the public hearings for the dates specified.
Second by Sprank.
Got a motion by Rousell and a second by Sprank. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to boards and commissions. We have applicant review for the zoning board of adjustment and appointment for the Civil Service Commission. And I will just note for the Civil Service Commission, because that commission is a bit unique within its appointment process compared to our other commissions based on Iowa Code Chapter 400, so with this commission, the city council is to vote on the approval of the mayor's selection to the commission. So at the April 1st, 2024 meeting, the mayor selected applicant Carla Heathcote for appointment. So I would suggest that the suggested disposition for this item would be for council to approve the mayor's selection of Carla Heathcote.
Thank you, Adrian. So the first is the board and commission applicant review. So we have the zoning board of adjustment. There is one five-year term through March 25th, 2029, and we have one applicant, Gwen Cosell. Do we have anyone to speak to this application? Seeing no one here, anything virtually?
There's not.
Okay.
No input.
Right. Then we will move on then to boards and commission appointments. So as Adrian mentioned, we have an appointment to the Civil Service Commission, one four-year term through April 6th, 2028. I have selected Carla Heathcote, so I would entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jones.
I move that the city council sustain the appointment of Carla Heathcote to the Civil Service Commission.
Second by Wethel.
Got a motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
We will move on to public hearings. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting in person who would like to discuss one of the public hearing items, please approach the podium when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input for the public hearing you would like to speak to and state your name and address. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function and state your question, or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input for the public hearing you would like to speak to. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Public hearing number one is resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Woodward Communications Incorporated and WHKS and Co. Incorporated, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations pursuant to the development agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Wethel.
I move to receive and file and adopt the resolutions.
Second.
Got a motion by Wethel, a second by Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Economic Development Director Jill Connors is recommending city council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Woodward Communications, and WHKS and Company, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Woodward Communications as developer is utilizing state and federal historic tax credits to renovate the interior and exterior of the building in 801 Bluff Street. The renovation will cost approximately $5.5 million, resulting in the restoration of the architectural integrity of the structure and increased usable working space. WHKS as employer has entered into a lease agreement for space in 801 Bluff Street once renovations are completed. WHKS will bring 10 new full-time jobs into the Dubuque city limits. The key elements of the development agreement include the following. Number one, the developer must make a capital investment of approximately $5.5 million to renovate the office facility located at 801 Bluff Street. Number two, employer must create and maintain 10 new full-time equivalent jobs at the new facility by October 1st, 2026. The 10 full-time equivalent jobs must be maintained through the term of the development agreement. Number three, developer will receive 10 years of tax increment financing incentives in the form of semi-annual rebates. These incentives are calculated in relation to the number of jobs committed in the development agreement. Tax increment financing incentives are estimated to not exceed $340,000. Number four, City of Dubuque will amend the Greater Downtown Urban Renewal District Plan to accommodate the issuance of tax increment financing incentives. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council adopt the attached resolution approving a proposed development agreement by and among the City of Dubuque, Iowa, Woodward Communications Incorporated, and WHKS and Company Incorporated, providing for the issuance of urban renewal tax increment revenue grant obligations. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
No input.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. But I'd just like to say that I'm happy on a couple of fronts for this type of development agreement, and this development agreement in particular coming in front of us here. One is some great work being done to very historic property by a great company itself in Woodward Communications, a stalwart here in the City of Dubuque. And also WHKS coming in as a tenant here. I think this is a really great opportunity and really happy to see some of this renewal down on Bluff Street. All right. Motion here is to receive and file, adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Public hearing number two is public hearing for sale of city-owned lot at 627 Romberg Avenue.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Spring.
I motion that we receive and file and adopt the resolution, or resolutions.
Second.
It is just one resolution, just, yep, so you're good there. And I got a motion from Sprank, second from Mr. Jones. Mike, please.
Thank you. City Manager Mike Van Milligan. Housing and Community Development Director Alexis Stager is recommending city council hold a public hearing, authorize the mayor to execute the resolution for disposition of city-owned real property located at 627 Romberg. The City of Dubuque acquired the property at 627 Romberg Avenue by petition for title of abandoned property in April 2019. When the property was acquired, there was a single-family dwelling on the lot that was deemed uninhabitable and not economically viable for rehabilitation. The structure was deconstructed shortly thereafter, and the lot has been vacant since that time. The Housing Department maintains the grass and snow removal for the property. 2023, the owner of the neighboring commercial structure located at 629 Romberg Avenue, Carl Williams, approached the Housing Department requesting to purchase the lot adjoining his building. The City of Dubuque entered into a purchase agreement with Mr. Williams on April 9th, 2024, purchased the lot at 627 Romberg for $10,768.68. I concur with the recommendation and respectfully request mayor and city council approval.
Thank you, Mike. We are on a public hearing to consider city council authorize the mayor to execute the resolution for disposition of city-owned real property located at 627 Romberg. Do we have anyone here in chambers to address us on this item? Seeing no one here, anyone virtually?
No.
Thank you.
No input.
All right. Back to the table then for any discussion. Seeing none. Motion here is to receive and file and adopt the resolution. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
Next is public input. At this time, anyone participating in the meeting may address the city council on the action items on the agenda or on matters under the control of the city council. For all in-person attendees, please approach the podium and state your name and address when the mayor asks if there is any in-person input. For all remote attendees, please enter your name and address in the chat function or state your name and address over the phone when the mayor asks if there is any virtual input. If more than one participant would like to speak, then city staff will determine the speaking order of the participants. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes, and the overall public input period is limited to 30 minutes. Under the Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input or that do not relate to the action items on the agenda.
Thank you, Adrian. Do we have any public input this evening?
Catherine Sorensen, 2613 Jackson. Wasn't going to speak tonight, but this is my backyard, 2601 Jackson, the property you're going to sell. Last year I came here and I requested that the city do some trimming of the tree in the backyard, and that still has not happened. I did meet the gentleman that's purchasing the property. He's young, so this is his first time buying property, buying rental property. So my request is going to be, I don't have a problem with that. Can we at least maintain that tree and get the tree trimmed? You're not going to see it from the street. If you drive down the street, you're going to see a really huge, gorgeous, green tree. If you sit at the bus stop and look up, you're going to see all the bare branches. If you want to come back and sit in my backyard, you can see all the bare branches. So he's a new, he's buying your property. At least can we trim the tree so that it doesn't take out, you know, two garages and a few fences if it falls the wrong way? Because if it falls north, it's taking out two garages. If it falls west, it takes out another house. And it's not to the condition that it's going to fall, but those branches that are up so high and are so large could come down in a really good storm, and that's going to take something out. I end up after every single storm, especially after a windstorm, cleaning up my yard from branches from the tree. I do not have a tree on my property. My neighbor next door, he ends up with doing the same thing in his backyard, and neither one of us actually have a tree on our property. So it's sort of like, so we know it's the tree is losing branches and it needs to be maintained, and I did request that last year. I would ask that before this gentleman purchases property, that at least the city come back out and at least trim back those dead branches and get that tree in a little bit better shape than it is right now before he finalizes and signs his name on the dotted line. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine, for your comments. Any other public input this evening? Anything virtually?
There's not.
Okay, thank you.
No input.
All right. Nothing from the city clerk's office? We can move on to action items, please.
Action item number one is 2024 Ken Kringle Awards Presentation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Resnick this time.
Yes, I move to receive and file and hear the presentation.
Second by Farber.
Got a motion by Resnick and a second by Farber. I think we're going straight to the presentation, right? Okay.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I am not Chris Happelson. I am Wally Warmout, Planning Services Director. Chris wishes she could be here tonight. She's our Historic Preservation Planner, but she's celebrating induction of her daughter in the National Honor Society, seeing her tonight, so it's well worth it, so. I'm going to introduce you tonight, our vice chairperson, Taya Domet, if you remember her from the previous two times she's come up here at the podium. So we have a great presentation, and I'll take it away. I'm going to be the button pusher to move her through the presentation here for you.
All right. We are proud to announce the 22nd Annual Ken Kringle Historic Preservation Award winners. These will be presented Wednesday evening, 6:30 at 1640 Main Street, the Robinson Lacy Mansion, in partnership with the county's Preservation Commission and Dubuque Main Street. The award is named after the late Ken Kringle for his dedication to Dubuque through his involvement as a member and past chairperson of the Historic Preservation Commission, president of the Bluff Street Neighborhood Association, resident of the Cathedral Historic District, and member of the Old House Enthusiast Club. The awards highlight the hard work, dedication, and vision of Dubuqueers helping to restore and revitalize our community. So we start with 1090 West Third Street. Oh, that's not that one. Oh, that's what it says. Yeah? Did I miss someone? There we go. Perfect. 1090 West Third Street. And so we begin right by recognizing Kara Bunta and Dave Cliveter for their restoration work on 1090 West Third Street. This Tudor Revival features a catslide roof, ornate stone entryway, encasement windows with transoms. Fred and Elsie Woodward were the first residents of the home in 1921, and Fred was the president of the Telegraph Herald. The Woodward family lived here through 1971 and were known for maintaining beautiful landscaping and a vibrant variety of trees, flowers, and hedges. Dave and Kara took the opportunity to restore lost details of the Tudor Revival home when they were making necessary repairs on the attic stairwell windows. They suspected the original half-timbering and masonry may have been covered up by inappropriate wood siding. This project is a great example of the "It's Hard Owning Historic Home" award. Congratulations to the Bunta-Cliveter family. And I have to attest that this is absolutely beautiful, as I live right next to it almost. Okay, so we'll move on to our next one, which is 249 West First Street. And the next person we'll be recognizing is Chris Miller for his dedication saving 249 West First Street. The Chadwick Block was built around 1890 and for years served as shilling hardware. The site had a precarious recent history. A previous owner came before the commission to tear down both the Chadwick Block and adjoining Historic Montana House. As that structure was only in a conservation district and covered with inappropriate siding, by definition, it was not National Register eligible, and the commission had no choice but to approve the request. Demolition was imminent. Chris Miller stepped in as the new owner of the Chadwick Block. Seeing its potential, he removed siding to reveal historic features and masonry and was successful in convincing the State Historic Preservation Office that the structure was National Register eligible. Chris worked with Heritage Works and was then able to utilize historic tax credits and City of Dubuque funding through economic development, downtown housing incentives, and a downtown rehabilitation loan. Sam Merly's project at the Montana House a few years before meant that this block was transformed. This is a great example of a dedicated owner and a preservation win. Chris felt it was an important property to preserve because it is highly visible property at the gateway to downtown. He believes that each one of the old buildings downtown tells a story about the city, and there are many challenges when it comes to restoring 100-plus-year-old buildings. But the hardest projects are always the most rewarding. Congratulations to Chris for his hard work on bringing this mixed-use structure back to its former glory. Across from Locust Street, from the Chadwick Block, sat a small neglected former service station. It had served many purposes over the years, starting in 1934 as a greasing building, later identified as an oil and service station. The structure had suffered window and garage door infill over the years and was painted in a variety of colors in the 21st century. It recently served as an investment office and later a restaurant during COVID. The current owner, Vicky Blake, worked hard to remove the many layers of paint, revealing the inherent nature of the building materials and details. The structure serves a very different purpose today as a small hotel with a smart approach to keeping the windows while retaining privacy for the new use. The project utilized a City of Dubuque facade grant and planning and design grant to make the project feasible. Today, this structure complements this important gateway to downtown, across Locust Street from the Chadwick Block and the neighboring Historic Montana House, which also received a Ken Kringle Award in recent years. Congratulations, Vicky, for helping to transform an important gateway in Dubuque. The next award is for 84 Main Street, and it was built in 1877 by Irish immigrant Richard Bennett. A Dubuque Gazetteer stated in 1894 that the hotel was well-conducted and has found favor with the public. The Bennett House Hotel was relatively small, with restaurant and saloon on the first floor and guest rooms lined on either side of center hallway on the upper two floors. The building's facade was typically configured for a late 19th century commercial structure, cast iron storefront with plate glass showcase windows on the ground floor and smaller double-hung and smaller double-hung windows with arched heads on the floors above. Six years later, Bennett built an almost identical side addition, installing a metal cornice on the facade to tie the two structures visually. This new construction doubled the building's size and expanded the hotel to a 33-room capacity, supplied with all modern conveniences. Brian and Tammy Lammers purchased the building with the intent of using the main floor space for an escape room business. COVID changed their plans, and now the commercial space will be available for lease soon. The Lammers utilized both the facade and housing grants through the Economic Development Department. The upper floor apartments have been rehabilitated into housing, and the structure now proudly serves the community. This long-term project paid off, helping to further enrich the old Main Street Historic District in which it resides. Congratulations, Brian and Tammy. And finally, we have 1450 Iowa Street. Do we have one for that? This 1870s Second Empire Revival-style house stands among the grand residences of the Jackson Park Historic District. An unusually intact structure, it was in the Schroeder family from the 1880s through 2020, and it served as a residence and music conservatory. Richard Schrader came from the Chicago Symphony and started what would become the Dubuque Symphony upstairs. The north egress system leads to a door at the second floor, which allowed students to enter through a vestibule and to get to the third floor conservatory. Details like a handmade wood and string box still hangs above the entrance on the interior, serving as a doorbell when the door moves across the dangling instrument. The three-story brick house with a mansard roof remained largely intact but suffered years of neglect when it was acquired by the City of Dubuque. For years, potential owners had shied away from taking on the project. Gary Carner and Tom Kelzer proposed a rehabilitation and restoration, bringing this property back as a residence with an opportunity to expand into the third floor. They removed the 1930s structurally unsound garage that was built in phases and replaced it to make the property more usable and marketable. Tom and Gary also received an award last year for saving the nearby Jackson Park row houses. Congratulations to them for their vision and hard work. On behalf of the Dubuque Historic Preservation Commission, we thank you for your support of preservation and invite you to attend the award ceremony on Wednesday at 6:30 p.m. at 1640 Main Street. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Taya, for being here to unveil those awards. That's wonderful to see this great work. Questions or discussion? You know, I think the one thing that I want to point out, you know, I don't think it's lost on anybody that we're talking about this during Historic Preservation Month, during a time that we're losing some properties that are, that it's a challenge to lose. You know, Mr. Sprank pulled one off the consent agenda tonight. And I've heard a lot of people say it's, you know, it's sad to lose a building like the old Dubuque Brewing and Malting Building. But at the same time, I think we understand why. But what I've thought about frequently as we go through this process is the hard work that it really requires to make historic preservation a reality. It is not something that just happens. It takes, it sort of takes the right people at the right time to make sure that places are saved when they need to be saved. I think we wrestle with that a lot here as a city council. I just know for a fact, you know, several of us personally live in historic homes, have historic properties, are dedicated to historic preservation personally. But as a city council member, it takes on a whole new weight. And I think it's a challenge that I very much appreciate that we have people in the city who are coming together as a community to try and make this work. And to see the work that's done here, I think is just, it's incredible work. And it takes people who are dedicated, and they're going to take the time, talent, and treasure to make sure that this happens. But it's not just the people who build it and make it happen. It's also the people who stick up for these properties. And then, Taya, you and the Historic Preservation Commission, Wally, you and your team and the people it takes, and then, you know, those of us who were elected to make some of these tough decisions. I think it has grown on me personally in this role just how important this is to the City of Dubuque. It is, it is so much a fabric of who we are that I do encourage us and implore us to continue to focus on this, but also really am very hopeful that more people will step up to be able to help to advocate for this. And when I say advocate, I mean come up with the ideas on how do we make this work? It's really hard to do. When places are falling apart and bricks are falling off walls, it's really hard to do. But I think it's entirely possible. And I do think that it is going to require us to make sure we have innovative ideas to keep things like this going. So thank you for the work that you're doing, and thank you for these awards. Every single year, I think it's important that we point this out. And of course, thank you to the award winners for their dedication for doing this. Yeah, Ms. Farber?
So I am actually a previous recipient of one of these awards for one of the buildings on Cable Car Square. And I just think it's important to express a moment of gratitude for all of those people who have taken the time and energy to do these restorations, because I know what it takes, and it is a love of labor. And what I think is interesting is that over time, how this is involved into a public-private partnership. And I think that the roles are mutually beneficial and mutually important. And I believe that this is one of the economic drivers for the City of Dubuque and part of the fabric of our history happens to be in historic preservation. So thank you very much. And I just love the way that you phrased and summarized the attributes and the talents, if you will, of these buildings, because I think it's important to be able to address what it's like, not only on the exterior, but also how much fun it is on the interior, because people don't realize what it is on the inside that you can modernize but yet respect and retain the infrastructure as it was 150 to 200 years ago. And that's kind of a nice little secret, you know? Kind of has curb appeal once you walk into those doors. So thank you so much for doing these awards every year and for sharing the good news. And then also, I just want to applaud the city council for the work that we do to really do that public-private partnership, and the city staff especially, to make sure that we can move forward together to keep the fabric of the City of Dubuque so nicely knit and so appealing to those who live here, work here, and play here.
Thank you, Ms. Farber.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you both. I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Well, we have a motion here to receive and file and hear the presentations. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Roussel.
Aye.
Motion passed at 7-0.
Action item number two is Greater Dubuque Development Corporation Quarterly Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Roussel.
I moved to receive and file and listen to the presentation.
Second.
A motion by Roussel and a second by Resnick. We'll turn it over to Mr. Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor Kavanaugh. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, city manager Mike Van Milligan, I guess it's more than he could handle. There he is. City Clerk Brightfelder and city attorney Colonel Brumwoll, and of course, the most excellent staff that work for you all and serve the citizens of Dubuque. My name is Rick Dickinson, and I have the pleasure of serving as the CEO and president of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, and I reside at 205 Hill Street in the Langworthy Historic District. So thank you for recognizing these wonderful achievements in historic preservation. I apologize because I'm a little late in providing a quarterly report for you. Every quarter, it's agreed as in our arrangements with the City of Dubuque that we make, provide a report for the mayor and council, but most importantly, for the citizens of Dubuque of the activities of Greater Dubuque Development Corporation. We are funded by the private sector, by public sector, and by the nonprofit community. And it's a responsibility we have to make sure that we report to you and the citizens of our progress and our activities. So that's why I'm here. We're a little late because you were busy in April with the new budget process. We will be back with a report in July, and I'll try to be brief, and I will be glad to answer any questions you may have at the end of my presentation. First of all, I'd like to thank the city for including the You Can Be Great Here piece that updated our progress in our five-year capital campaign to really transform the City of Dubuque by increasing the number of people working in Dubuque County, by increasing the population of Dubuque County, by reducing poverty in our county, by increasing the development of commercial and residential property in our county. And we are working on every one of those issues and having success with each. And you can go to greaterdubuque.org under News section, and you can find copies of everything that I will be presenting with you tonight. So thank you for including that in the utility bill. I'm sure they, hopefully liked it a little better than the bill, but we'll see. I'd also like to share tonight, and it is part of our website, the You Can Be Great Here Greater Dubuque Development Region 2023 Skills Gap Analysis. This is a large document, 59 pages. We produce it for the region around Dubuque. All adjoining counties of Dubuque, Grant County, Wisconsin, Joe Davies in Illinois, Jackson, Jones, Delaware, and Clayton. This clearly is a regional collaboration funded by Greater Dubuque Development Corporation in collaboration with Northeast Iowa Community College. I am not going to read all 59 pages of this report, and it really gets down in the minutia of workforce in our market. But I would like to share just some bullet points about what the findings are and encourage both the HR community, the business community, and our public officials to look at this data and understand the challenges and opportunities we're faced with and have the opportunity to take advantage of in our region. Couple of key findings. Dubuque County and its Greater Dubuque region are witnessing a job growth rate that outpaces the increase in working age population. When we define working age population, it's age 15 to 69. Baby boomers like myself are retiring in groves. When I was born in 1953, and I guess they'd age out of the 60s award that was given to some great folks in the City of Dubuque lately. But at 70 years old, my family, I was the oldest of seven kids. And at that time, there were four children per household in 1953. Today, it's 1.6. And so as baby boomers are retiring in groves, we have to put more on the top of the bucket than leaking out of the bottom of it, and it's a tremendous challenge in the Midwest and in Iowa in particular. Second finding, education attainment is growing, and the trend is projected to continue. It's a critical asset for Dubuque. We're blessed to have higher education in our midst with Clark-Loris University of Dubuque, Platteville, and the other smaller institutions of higher learning and NICC in our market. We need to really focus on retaining that talent once it has graduated. Third, each of the eight, top eight industries have a skills gap critical to growth in the region. The principal eight industries in our market have skills gaps, and I'm going to get into that in a bit. College population is a crucial talent pool for recruitment. We must work, and we are working, on making sure that no longer are we asking college students to consider our market upon graduation, but rather, we're welcoming them to our community the day they set foot on campus and try to build a relationship with that talent if we can only keep it. And then there remains a large demand for entry-level labor in many of our largest industries. Those are basic findings. Some strategies, key strategies that are in place as we speak. Increasing recruitment, completion, and employment outcomes of Opportunity Dubuque graduates. If you recall, Opportunity Dubuque is a program funded by the city, the county, and the DRA. And with those dollars, we provide scholarships for filling the skills gap that are identified by this document every year. We look at these classifications of employment. We look where certificates of training can be provided to upskill people to qualify for these new positions. And once doing that, we remove all financial barriers to that individual to attain the talent, the skills, to have the reward and the dignity of work. And it is working. We currently have 250 folks enrolled in Opportunity Dubuque at Northeast Iowa Community College, and we will graduate in excess of 200 participants. And we have over a 90% employment rate upon graduation. Next, grow opportunities for career exposure and exploration to high-demand occupations in the area of primary schools. We're doing that in conjunction with so many other partners to try to reach kids in K through 12 to inform them about the opportunities that exist in our market. Mitigate transportation barriers for workforce college students and those seeking skilled training. Major obstacle, if you lack employment, you lack money. If you lack money, you lack transportation. So how do you get the education you need? How do you get your kids to childcare? How do you work through that? Well, first of all, I'd like to commend the City of Dubuque. A major action last year, they got a little fanfare, but it's huge, is removing the fee structure for students in higher education in our market. It not only provides them access to retail, it provides access to employment to help them work their way through college, but it also gets them off campus and creates that affection for the community, increasing the likelihood that we might retain them. Mitigate, increase the engagement of local college students, increase retention of local college students. We're doing that as well through a community of college programs by reaching out to the students on campus, inviting them to enjoy different activities in the City of Dubuque and around Dubuque County. Most popular one of late was the Saints game. Over 433 college students attended a Saints game. We provided them pizza, a great time. Most of them didn't even know that there was a hockey team in Dubuque. And those are the kind of things we're trying to achieve. So if you would go to greaterdubuque.org, you'd be able to find the Skills Gap Analysis, and it does post and prioritizes 20 skills gaps. How do we determine a skills gap? You understand how many people are employed in that category today. You understand what you're going to need in that category 10 years from now. You subtract those people who are going to age out of that category in the next 10 years, and you add the number of people that you're going to educate in that category in that 10-year period. And that formula gives you the skills gap. And we need to fill those gaps if we're going to have the employment that we need. Info Action Quarterly. That's also a piece that is available at greaterdubuque.org. It is our summary of the activities of Dan McDonald and Jason White, who are tip of the spear in reaching out to the business community to find out what's going on in their world. And something new has happened in the last 12 months. I want to share that with you. It'll be a year ago, I believe, May 10. A group of concerned business folks expressed that concern about the business environment in our community. I work for a board of 46 leaders in our community. Many of them happen to be in this room tonight. And they asked a legitimate question. They said, if there are people concerned, why didn't we know about it? Why didn't you, Rick, inform your board of directors that there was this issue brewing? Well, it's because it was a minority of the business population, and that minority was listened to. Changes were made, and progress has been made. But it was a legitimate point. And so, beginning in August of 2023, we started to ask four questions that were not part of our Info Action interview, and that was, what is the ease of doing business in the City of Dubuque, Dubuque County, State of Iowa, and the federal government? And I'm here to provide the results of that. So in the last quarter, ending in March, in a scale from 1 to 7, 1 being the lowest, 7 being the highest, what is the ease of doing business in Dubuque? The business community, with 168 interviews, said that the city ranked 5.39 on a 7-scale, 1 to 7-scale. Average would be 3.5. Said the county was at 5.31, state at 5.09, fed at 3.87. In March alone, the city was ranked 5.52. So obviously, there are always concerns, no matter what we do with, no matter who we do it with. But the fact of the matter is, of those 168 businesses that we talked to, they ranked the city above average in ease of doing business with them. And I congratulate you for that. We also continued asking our usual questions about business services, community services. Fire typically number one, numero uno, ranked 6-point-something. Next, police. Next, ambulance. Next, colleges and universities. Next, community colleges. Next, schools, K through 12. Then, easy to do, doing business with city. Out of 21 categories, what ranks the least? Childcare, housing, and surprise, surprise, air service. So congratulations to you, and we're always trying to do it better. The work with Opportunity Dubuque also identified the three greatest strengths for our community. It identified community leadership and partnership. Let me repeat that. The business community, the 168, well, actually, 198 people we've interviewed since July 1, they said the number-one asset for the community, the number-one strength, is community leadership and partnerships. Number two, quality of life. Number three, market size, location, and customer loyalty. And there's a flip side to that last one. Top three weaknesses, workforce availability. Population and market size was number two because it's a plus and a minus, depending on where you're coming from. And then, of course, the weakest concern is air service. Top priorities identified with the business community? Increased housing opportunities. Arts and entertainment, number two. Air service, number three. And a three-way tie for four, talent attraction, childcare, recreational opportunities. That includes outdoors and sportsplex-type facilities. Okay, let's talk about two of those things. Are we doing anything to fix those things that have been identified by the business community? And how do we relate that to government? And what is your reaction to it? First of all, let's talk about childcare. Tremendous progress there. We now have three new childcare facilities in some stage of development. One in Dyersville called Kids Project, which is nearly, is under construction, nearly completed. completed. The other is C and B, Cottingham and Butler Building, a new childcare facility on Locust. And lastly, Bright Minds, which is a collaboration between the Dubuque Initiatives, the Y, the city, and the county, and the public school system. It was the first childcare opened in the state of Iowa with the funding that was made available across the state, twenty-five million dollars available, seven million wound up in Dubuque County, because we know how to write grants. And the Y is running that facility. It's a state-of-the-art childcare center at Bright Minds. And it is a collaboration between the public school system with Wraparound Care, and the city with its new IT department, and the city and county with the nine-one-one facility will be located at the same facility. I'd like to thank Dubuque Initiatives for the leadership in that, the Y for their partnership, the city and the county for the funding. But that wasn't enough. If you just open up facilities, it just creates competition for the existing facilities, and maybe no net gain, because one pops up and the other one goes out of business. Because one of the greatest challenges in childcare is workers in childcare. It's one of the poorest-paid positions. It is the poorest-paid position of all categories in our marketplace. So those positions that take care of that, which is most precious to us, which is our children and our grandchildren, is the lowest compensated. So how do you increase the number of employees so you can increase the number, the amount of capacity? Is you ask people for help. That spawned Business Champions for Childcare. I'm pleased to inform you and the citizens of Dubuque and Dubuque County that one million three hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars has been raised by state funds and the private sector to fund Business Champions for Childcare. What does it do? We've reached out to every childcare facility in Dubuque County on a regional basis in Dubuque County and said, we have money for you to try to help you recruit talent, childcare workers at your facility, so that you can increase capacity at your facility with the talent that you need. We have already selected eighteen applications from childcare facilities across the county, totaling six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars in the first year of operation. We believe this will increase the number of employees at childcare centers throughout Dubuque County by a hundred and fifty, and there will be five hundred and fifty-seven additional slots available to the families of Dubuque to take care of their children. I hope you see that the cause and effect here. We identify what the problem is by talking to people that understand the issues. We talk to public officials and the private sector about how do we find a solution to those problems, and then we solve them. Housing popped up time and again. Again, thank you, mayor and council, for your leadership in establishing new incentives for housing. We now have over two thousand units of housing in some stage of development. We need to kick it in the flanks a little bit and get it going, but we'll do that, and thanks to you, it's successful. So that is my report, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Rick, thank you very much. Questions and discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you. So at your recent workforce meeting, one of the speakers said something that I never thought of it like this, but the institutions of higher learning have actually done the hard work of bringing a potential workforce to this area.
Sure.
And I know you've put a lot of effort into the colleges and appreciate what they do and give a lot of service to our institutions of higher learning. That was something that I hadn't thought of before, and I think you're doing a lot to keep them coming. The other thing that I thought was great was just tonight, you said, we're always trying to do better. And one of those things that, and I just call that relentless improvement, you're doing that, and what I was really impressed with, if people would go to accessdubukjobs.com, I think they've done an impressive update to make things better for both the potential workforce and for our business community. And I was hoping you could comment on any of those.
Thank you, Councilman Resnick. The breakfast last Friday talked about progress in workforce, and thank you for attending. We did talk about accessdubukjobs.com, which is a truly unique relationship between the local newspaper in our market, The Telegraph Herald, TH Media, and the economic development, Regional Economic Development Group, Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, to have a job board to post opportunities that exist in Dubuque. I was recently at another market doing a best practices visit, and they had just launched a website on their site two years ago, and it was very basic. You know, you email a job, and they put it on their website. When I explained to them the interaction of our relationship with the TH and the power of accessdubukjobs.com, it flipped them out. And when I said that we started it in nineteen ninety-eight, they couldn't believe it. At a time when we literally, once we developed the job posting site, employers did not yet have internet access and had to fax, I'll explain that to some of your younger members what that is, fax the application or the job opening to us. We entered it on the site, and then when the application came in, we faxed it back to them. We were blessed to have such talent in Dubuque to create, products like this and partnerships like this. We are blessed to have higher education in our market. Higher education is under tremendous pressure. I don't think any of us can understand it unless we sit in that president's seat and deal with the day-to-day actions. I'd like to acknowledge, now that you mention it, just a champion for higher education nationally, a gift to Dubuque that has announced their retirement, and that is Dr. Jeff Bullock, a tremendous talent, brought University of Dubuque from the grave and created one of the strongest liberal arts colleges in the country, and we owe him a tremendous debt of gratitude, as we do to all of these institutions of higher learning. And we, as a community, public and private sector, need to do everything humanly possible to guarantee their survival, their success, and allow them to thrive, because they are creating the seed corn of our workforce, and that is talent in Dubuque. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, Rick, thank you. You know, I'm listening to you. I can't help but make the connection between something we heard earlier tonight. There was a, I don't know if you're here in time, but there was a work session that we had, the IJAG program, and young students who, when I had an opportunity to talk with them, generally asked them the question, well, what do you want to see in Dubuque? You know, as young people who are in high school right now. And not only did they answer me then, but they went back and did some more thinking on it, and then brought those answers tonight. And we heard, you know, several things. In fact, I wrote some of them down here that I think are going to be kind of what you mentioned here, because you said, area businesses ranked the following as the top ongoing priorities. I'm reading from your Info Action report here. Increasing housing opportunities for workforce, that's fifty-three percent of them said that. Arts and entertainment venues was number two. Air service, obviously, was in there at number three. But number four, I think connects to number two, talent attraction initiatives, childcare, and recreation opportunities. And one of the things that young people who are already living here said was they want, basically, places to hang out after five o'clock, is kind of what they told us. They want some new stores, they'd like to see more things like the mall, more like that. Indoor fun places, they mentioned laser tag and karaoke specifically, a sports complex, indoor and outdoor. I won't bring up the electric scooters again, but I said it out loud anyway. Anything to do after five, because they want parks that are built for them. But they also talked a lot about the roller skating rink, which, you know, I remember going to when I was their age and didn't think that that was still something they wanted to do, but when Skate Country closed in Asbury, they miss it. They want things to be able to do. So you say arts and entertainment venues. I hope that we are listening, all of us, because I think it's really important that we make the direct connection between entertainment and places for people to enjoy their life and the economic development activities that you and all other economic development organizations that work in this region are a part of. But I think this is, you know, when you talk about getting young people connected to this community, that really is what we need to focus on, to be able to bring in that talent attraction. We need to hang on to the people who are living here now and the people who have come here for colleges and for higher education, and then, at the same time, address that skills gap that you're talking about. It's a major lift, but we are making progress. I think it's really important that we talk about that, and you've mentioned it a little bit, but I want to make sure I pat you on the back enough before you leave here, because we are seeing progress in that. The numbers that, you know, the goals that you have in increasing the, increasing the amount of jobs that we have, making sure that we have housing for people, all these things are, and population increasing in the county, we're seeing progress. We're doing that. We're seeing progress at a time that a lot of other places are not. So what we are doing is working, but we have to put our shoulder to that wheel right now. And I see you doing that, I see your staff doing that every day, and you have a board working on that on a regular basis, because I get the honor to sit on that board. So I am, I want to make sure that people recognize that GDDC is doing that work and doing it very well. But we clearly hear you saying, we have more work to do, and I appreciate that.
Thank you, mayor. Two points. IJAG, you mentioned, yes, it's a great program. Wendy M. Harold, formerly Vice President of Northeast Iowa Community College, a tremendous partner here, heads up IJAG statewide. She contacted Greater Dubuque Development Corporation about a month and a half ago, and they had a serious revenue challenge, especially in Dubuque. And in order to maintain those, that tremendous program at our K through twelve, they needed some money. So Dubuque Works helped IJAG financially, because we do believe that it's critical to the success of our high school students to understand what the opportunities are, especially with upskilling, to have the kind of jobs that allow them to own a home and have a quality of life that we all expect. And on the issue of workforce, I don't know if I mentioned it, but March of this year, which is the latest data we have, is the highest level of employment for March in our community's history. When I say our community, the MSA of Dubuque, at sixty thousand seven hundred. The benchmark we were looking at to beat was pre-pandemic in 2019. We've gone far beyond that, and I think this year is going to be a record holder for each of the months going forward, and we still have a great deal of work to get to our goal of sixty-four thousand, but if we work together, we can get it.
Well, thank you for all the efforts that you're making, and thank you very much for being here to provide another report. Look forward to seeing you in July, I believe you mentioned, so we'll look forward to seeing you then, or sometime thereabouts.
Work. Whenever you'd call.
All right, whenever we call. Fair enough. Okay, motion here is to receive and file here that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones, Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Pass the seven-zero.
Action item number three is 2024 Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce, Washington, DC Fly-In Report.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
I move that we receive and file and hear Terry's presentation.
Second. Motion by Farber, second by Jones. Turn it over. Ms. Terry Goodman.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Some of this is going to be review for many of you who did attend the DC Fly-In this year, but I am the Director of Strategic Partnerships. I live at thirteen oh-six Tomahawk, and tonight is my husband and my forty-sixth wedding anniversary. And Mike graciously invited John.
Awesome.
Graciously invited John to come to this to celebrate, but he's waiting at home from me, so I'm glad that Rick kept his presentation short. John will appreciate that. So I just want to say, this is a review. I'm not sure where the PowerPoint is. Corey? Sorry. I'll close this out. Ah, there it is. Whoops, no. Where did I put it? There you go. Terrific, Corey. Thank you very much. Well, and as I said, this evening, we're going to review the Washington, DC Fly-In. This is the first time in over twenty years that there's been a report at council about this event. So what I'm going to do is just briefly explain what it is, the history of it, how we implement it, and then what the impact is for the community. So to begin, I just again want to thank the mayor and council for the support you've given this event, both members of past councils, past mayors, but also all of you in your support of this event every year. It's critically important, I believe, to Dubuque's success. It's one of three big events we have every year. We partner with the Dubuque Area Chamber of Commerce. Molly was traveling on vacation, was not able to be here tonight, but we want to make sure we recognize Molly, her board of directors, her staff. Claire Gill, who was not able to join us because she had a new baby girl, but she did a lot of the legwork ahead of time for the chamber portion of the trip. And also Justine Paradiso, who's also having a baby, I think, this week, who came out to Washington and did a lot of the day-to-day management of details for us. So we do want to recognize our partners and always recognize that these events don't happen without our partners. The second big event, of course, many of you know, is the congressional staff visit in the fall, and that's when our members of Congress share their staff with us for three days, and they're here, and we organize that, and the chamber joins with us for that event, along with other sponsors, including Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, the Dubuque Area Community Foundation, the County of Dubuque, and the Dubuque Regional Airport. So we, and ECIA. So we have a lot of partners who help make this happen. And the third event that we have every year is the state legislative dinner. So we also have this relationship with the state. And as I said, much of this started about twenty years ago, and here are some of the folks who went this year. And when we think about the, how this idea came about, I was in Washington, DC for the museum in the late nineteen nineties, and so was Ken Kramer from the airport there. It's a blast from the past. Some of you may remember Ken was the airport manager, and we were in DC, occasionally would bump into each other, but Congressman Jim Nussel and his, one of his staff persons, his PR person, Steve Weber, who used to write for The Telegraph Herald, sat me down one day, and they said, Dubuque is missing in action. And they said that every city, even smaller cities of any significance in Iowa, come to Washington once a year and explain what their priorities are to the members of Congress. And they said, we know nothing about Dubuque except the museum and the airport. So I came back, again, I was working at the museum, but I came to the city manager, and I told him what I heard. And so Mike invited Steve Horn, the chamber CEO at the time, to meet with us and to sit down and talk about what we could do about it. So we started the DC Fly-In. So that was back in the early two thousands, and we haven't exactly pinpointed the date, but we believe it's twenty-one years ago. So that's what, when this all began and why it all began. So it began under Mayor Terry Duggan. He first took the first trips, and then Mayor Roy Buell started in two thousand and six, and now Mayor Kavanaugh. And I put these pictures up here, and I cite the mayors, because it's so critically important that our elected officials have relationships with elected officials in Washington and in Des Moines, and they will say that. So the mayor, but also council members, when you go, as I've said in the past, it really puts an exclamation point behind our requests for programs, policies, projects, and appropriations. And it means more to them, because you are elected from the same constituents that elect them. So I want to just highlight that and say thank you very much for that. In addition, I want to recognize our partners, and as I said, this year, when we traveled to Washington, we had GDDC, Rick was with us, we had the chamber, we had many private businesses, John Deere, McDermott Excavating, we had partners like the Dream Center, we had DuPaco represented, Chanda Ravada was there, representing ECIA. And again, that's so critically important, that we have our partners, both in the private sector and in the nonprofit sector, who join with us. So why the DC Fly-In? And we created the event with a vision that it would provide us, provide the city an opportunity, and the city writ large, an opportunity to build personal relationships with key federal leaders whose decisions directly impact our community. And what was the mission? It is to tell the Dubuque story, identify successes, challenges, priority projects, programs, and policies that are impacted by the federal government. And you, again, you do this, you're on these trips, and you understand how important it is. And when we move on, I'll talk a little bit more about just what's happened from the trip we had a couple weeks ago. We're going to be traveling, Councilwoman Farber, myself, Dave Lyons from GDDC, and Chris Coleman, to talk to the Director of the OCIO, which is the, basically, the state office and the Office of Management that manages all the broadband money, because we're still trying to make sure all of our citizens and residents in Dubuque are connected to broadband. So that's just one of the outcomes from this year's trip that we're following up on in the coming month. This, I think, is important, and it is that the power of Dubuque. the power of Dubuque is people planning and partnerships, that we come out with one voice, unanimity, and strong leadership in all of these sectors, nonprofit, local government, and in the business sector, and we come together. I've been told over and over and over again, other cities don't come with a plan. They don't come with a united front. They may be fighting in different quarters, they may have conflict, and so there isn't unanimity in their ask and in their proposals to the federal government. And as a result, the elected officials, as you would probably do if it happened in Dubuque, could step back and say, we're not going to get involved. That community is, doesn't have it together. So I just want to continue to stress this piece of it, that it's so critically important for Dubuque to continue to work in partnerships, strategic partnerships with all of our different constituents in the community as we tell our story. So just, you know, the nitty-gritty of it, generally, I start planning it in February, in January, with calls made to the federal agencies that we want to visit that year, and also to the White House and to the members of Congress. Now, the chamber manages the member meetings, although I'm in touch with them because we're always talking anyway about all kinds of issues that the city has cooking at the federal level. But we also meet with the chamber and with Dubuque city staff to talk about what projects and priorities are we going to discuss, what's the discussion going to be once we get to DC. So we make the calls, and then we coordinate with our partners on the key messages, and the visits are arranged through our office at the city. This year, we had an overlap, and there were pluses and minuses to this. I know it really crunched the mayor's schedule and Councilwoman Farber's. The National League of Cities meetings lately have been really, I think, good. I think they've been strong, we've learned a lot. And they also have speed dating at the end. And speed dating is where all the federal agencies come in and plop at a table, and you can go around with quick questions and interview staff if you've got a question about a grant, haven't heard back on a debrief, or if you have a question about how much money or some sort of specific aspect of a grant. This is a really nice opportunity, but it was, this was the only time that chamber could get us out there based on their schedule, so we did go. So our trip was preceded by the NLC, the National League of Cities meeting. So we did have some meetings ahead of time, and in fact, we were able to cancel our meeting with NTIA because Susan and I spent the better part of, what, an hour or more, and you'd already visited with them. So we got our questions answered at that. So that was helpful. But there are also other good connections you can see made at this, at that event as well, and many very dynamic and important speakers. Okay, so then, what is our focus? What's our North Star? And here it is, and that is city council goals and priorities. And so we determined this year, based on goals and priorities that you've set, and our grants that are looming or potential or in the hopper, that we would visit with the Department of Transportation, the Department of Interior, Department of Energy, EPA, the White House, and the congressional offices. So that's really how we work through who we will speak to. And here we are at our first meeting, the U.S. Department of Transportation meeting, and we talked to them about the RACE Implementation Grant. Bob, Engineer City, Assistant City Engineer Bob Schisel made a presentation on the RACE project. FTA was also covered by, I think it was covered by Bob, yes, FRA was covered by Bob, FAA was covered by Federal Aviation Administration, was obviously a key issue and was the second one we addressed at the meeting, and that was covered by Todd. And also Matt Skinner, the consultant who's working with us on the return of air service, was there as well. And then Chandra also spoke about the Streets Program, and we knew at the time that we were receiving a $2 million grant, but we couldn't share it publicly. We were waiting for the Senate offices to announce that. But it was a good day, and it was great to talk with the policy folks who are involved in that, and they're very impressed with Dubuque and very excited for this project. Our next visit was the White House, and I want to point out that all these meetings are opened by the mayor. He introduces our team, he introduces the topics, he introduces the speakers, which, again, is so critically important. We're so grateful you were there, Mayor, as usual. So we talked about broadband access. You can imagine, Councilwoman Farber spoke about that. Equity was addressed by staff member Anderson Sancy. Climate was addressed by Gina Bell from the Office of Sustainability. Transportation was addressed by the mayor primarily, and Bob Schisel. And we talked about, then, we heard from the staff in the White House, including Tom Perez and other staff, about the American Rescue Plan Act, the bipartisan infrastructure law, and Inflation Reduction Act. So Matt Whalen, or Ryan Whalen, who talked to us about the IRA, gave us a lot of information and there are ways the city can save money on energy implementations here that we've already engaged in, and there are also ways that nonprofits and businesses, and actually homeowners, can benefit from these tax credits. So Justin and I are working on a presentation right now for the city manager, where we're going to go through that so that we can make that very digestible for the community, so that people can benefit from that program. I was not allowed into this meeting. This is the first time in 20 years I couldn't get into the Department of Energy because I signed up as Terry Goodman, which I've done in past years, but because my driver's license has Therese Goodman, it didn't match. So because there's, they're top-secret things on the top floor of Department of Energy related to nuclear things, I was not allowed upstairs. So I did know, though, that Chris Castro was the person that we arranged the meeting with. Chris spoke to us last year. He's a dynamo. We did ask Chris to come back and speak at the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference, which he did, he did a bang-up job. But these are the topics that were covered, and most of these are grant programs we're looking at, and we are now engaged, Gina Bell is pushing us, we're trying to get through two other grants, but we have a grant due the end of May that we will be working on, coming up for, for the city of Dubuque, and it would help us with some of the energy costs out at the Water and Resource Recovery Center. So there were great discussions in that meeting. We had to separate, we had to double up on meetings. We had a meeting with the Department of Interior at the same time as our EPA meeting. We didn't want to miss either because we do have a grant pending with the Department of Interior, National Park Service, for the second phase of Comiskey Park. That photograph that you see there has been used by the Department of Interior on all their webinars for the grant program. So everybody around the country would probably recognize Comiskey Park's opening. They love Comiskey Park, it's as popular as the Bee Branches project is at EPA. So Corey split off with Marie Ware, Anderson Sancy, and Councilwoman Sprank, this is in his ward, so they led the charge and did a great job representing the city of Dubuque and this project at the Department of Interior. And I understand from those who attended, it was a great meeting, very positive, and unlike other federal agencies that say, if you have a grant in the hopper, you can't talk about it, which we heard at EPA, Department of Interior didn't feel that way. So they were able to describe the second phase and the important, importance of that project for Dubuque. So that was a good meeting. We were at EPA, and that was a wonderful meeting. They, Dubuque is their, one of their favorites because of Bee Branch, because of all the brownfields, and so we talked about brownfields. Jill was there. Environmental justice was addressed by Robert Kimball from the Dream Center, very powerfully, very impressive partner that we were able to have with us this year. Led service lines, Green and Healthy Homes were addressed by Mary Rose Corrigan, and the SWIFER grant they know we're going to be reapplying for, for the recycling carts and vehicles, community-wide. But that was a very positive meeting, and all of our partners from Region Seven, who come to Growing Sustainable Communities Conference every year, Stan Walker and the crew, they were all on the screen, on teams with us at that meeting. So that was exciting. I just put the chamber reception up there. This is an all-chamber. You see Brian Moose, a former staff person who's now working in Washington with the Hispanic Caucus, was there. The reception is a great time for old and new friends, old staff, Dubuque staff members, old legislative staff who've retired. John Conrad was there, Richard Bender called during the middle of it. We just had a marvelous time, and it's always a time for us to get together informally and build those relationships that are so critical for our success. Then we met with Congresswoman Henson. That was our first meeting, actually, with the members. And because she had to leave town on Friday, she was meeting with us Thursday morning in her office, which, if you've been on the House side, they're teeny-tiny, so you can see us all crowded in. But it was really positive. All the staff were there because they were working in the room, and the Congresswoman came in. We talked about air service. That was really the main emphasis of our meetings in Washington, so that really took precedence at the White House and at these meetings. But also, other members of the community who were with the chamber brought up immigration. We brought up the community project funding program, which Congresswoman Henson participates in, and she explained that it was late this year, but you'll hear more about that in the future. That deadline was just this past Friday. So we talked about that, but also the RACE grant and how important it is. It was, it was a very positive meeting there. With U.S. Senator Grassley, we talked about air service. We talked about the ACP program, which was discontinued, which you're aware of, and also the RACE Implementation Grant, and the fact that it's a priority for us, even though we know Cedar Rapids has, you know, their big project in too. We really were pushing and have continued to push for a RACE grant with Senator Grassley and with Senator Ernst. And air service, and I think what dropped off here was the ACP as well, we discussed with her. So all good meetings, and I know you have a closed session, so I don't want to belabor this, but in summary, I just want to say, what's the value to the community? It is this partnership and collaboration that we have to build in order to go out there, or to go to Des Moines. So in some ways, one of the, the, sort of, the benefits that we derive is the fact that it encourages us and incites us to continue to work together with our partners in the community and to create the one voice. It creates this urgent sense of urgency around our city council priorities, because we have to identify those and the grants we're involved in, but also communicate those in an articulate and collective manner with our elected officials and their staff. And we also then, too, have this sense of shared responsibility for our community with our private sector partners, our nonprofit partners. And there is leadership development, and you know, we bring young people every year on that trip, and I think that's important, too, because we are a community that has been greatly blessed by strong leaders, and we need to continue to lift up those next generation of leaders. And this is one of those events that allows them to, to really shine. So, thank you. And as I said, I started with thank you, I'm going to end with thank you. We can't do this without you, so, it's so important. And I know you have a big meeting ahead, so thanks for your patience, and if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Well, Terry, thank you so much for the work that you do with all this. I know how much goes into it, and, you know, you talk about leadership development, and a lot of that is, is through you, and you helping us to develop our, our own voices as leaders here, to try and represent our community in the best way possible. And you come with such a wealth of knowledge when it comes to advocacy work at the federal level and state level, so thank you very much for everything that you do.
Thank you. I have to, I have to hold that mirror back at all of you, you know, because we're, we're a team, and it's a, it, I can't even say, you know, how proud I am to work for Manager Van Milligan and my colleague Corey, but for all of you. It's just, and what a great community, don't you love it? It's so, it's wonderful to advocate for this place. It really is.
I agree with you.
It's my privilege.
Other questions or discussion for Terry before we let her go and celebrate her anniversary?
Just a big ditto to the invaluable leadership that you provide us, and you are really the guiding light for us when it comes to this kind of advocacy, and I can't thank you enough for helping me prep for all of these legislative meetings and for all of the discussions that we have with the different departments on Capitol Hill and also coming up in Des Moines, because I think your leadership provides us the guidance and gives us the, the best framework I can think of because of your history, because of your talents, and just because of who you are and your sincerity and all that you do to provide smiles on our faces because of our mutual commitment to the city of Dubuque. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you all very much, so.
All right. Well, thank you for the presentation. We sincerely appreciate that, and I'm glad to know that it's the first time in 20 years we've done that. I'm glad we've done that. That's, that was a good move, so thank you for informing everyone about that. Okay. Motion here is to receive and file here that presentation. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion. Pass the seven zero.
Action item number four is Reschedule Work Session, Inclusive Dubuque Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Rousell.
I move to receive and file and move the work session to Monday, May 20th at 6:00 PM.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Rousell and a second by Wethel. I do want to let the rest of the council know, I have been invited to attend the American Flood Coalition Summit in Washington DC on this night, and was going to attend the meeting virtually, but there is a pretty good chance that I will not be able to be here, at least at the beginning of the meeting, but I will do my very best. So I will miss the work sessions and just putting our, the meeting in the capable, very capable hands of Councilman Jones, so just wanted to make everyone aware. The motion here is to receive and file and schedule that work session. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion. Pass the seven zero.
Action item number five is Work Session Request, Historic Millwork District Master Plan Update.
Mr. Mayor.
Jones.
I move that the work session scheduled for Monday, May 20th be moved from 5:15 to 6:00 PM.
Second by Sprank.
Thank you. Would you like to add receive and file that, Mr. Jones?
Sure.
All right. Perfect. We will receive and file as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Jones, second by Sprank. Yes.
Is it not June 17?
The, we are on the, we're actually on number five. I think you're looking at number six.
My bad.
That's all right.
And I will just clarify, the, this work session, the request is that it start at 5:15. I thought that maybe Councilmember Jones might have said, move it from 5:15 to 6:00, so I just want to make sure it's clarified that this one is requested to start.
Okay. Oh, it says, it's actually written here, it says from 5:15 to 6:00 PM.
I think that is the, the duration of it, because if you look at the Inclusive Dubuque Update, that's starting at 6:00 PM.
Great.
So this one, it will start at 5:15 and end right at 6:00, so we can have the Inclusive Dubuque.
Yep. Thank, I did too. Thank you, Adrian.
Move to reschedule the work session as, as directed in the agenda.
That's a good way to do that one. Yes. All right. So we got that. Ms. Jones, Mr. Sprank, you're still good with that one, I'm guessing?
Aye.
Okay. All right. We're all clear then? Where we need to be and when we need to be there? Okay. Perfect. All right. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.
Aye.
Motion. Pass the seven zero.
Action item number six is Work Session Request, Equitable Poverty Reduction and Prevention Plan.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Farber.
Move that we receive and file and have the work session June 17th at 5:15 PM.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Farber, second by Wethel. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Aye.
Wethel.
Aye.
Farber.
Aye.
Sprank.
Aye.
Resnick.
Aye.
Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Rousell.[1690.83] Russell.
Next, our council member reports.
All right, reports, it's been a busy few weeks. Ms. Russell?
Thank you. I was able to attend and present at the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference in April, and I just want to say congratulations to Gina Bell, our Sustainability Director, our city staff, and our Grand River staff for a fantastic event with attendees from 13 states and Canada, and really, it really showcased Dubuque's leadership and sustainability, was a great event. On May 1st, we had an Arbor Day celebration with Dubuque Trees Forever, and this community event is a necessary part of Dubuque achieving our Tree City USA status, and we had four young elementary school poets, some great sidewalk chalk art, and thanks to Mike for stopping by. I'd like to say thanks to everyone who participated in Dubuque Days of Caring, including a number of my city council colleagues, and I also had a mulching event that was rescheduled, so I got to do two Days of Caring events. And lastly, I volunteered at Dubuque Main Street on last Monday to put some packets together for the upcoming first Saturday of Farmer's Market, which was last Saturday. So it's open now, and I hope everyone takes the opportunity to come out to our wonderful Farmer's Market on any given Saturday downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Mr. Sprank?
Thank you. Yeah, we've all been a little busy, between Days of Caring, a first responders dinner, neighborhood meetings, the ribbon cutting at the new hotel, the Farmer's Market opening, I also met with Table Mound folks, have been working with an artist that's making a sculpture out of recycled Comiskey Park playground equipment that's going to be at Ottoman School, hopefully sometime before the school gets out, so looking forward to that, and when that all comes together, I'm sure I'll invite everyone down to see that, so, yes, it's all been a busy, busy couple of weeks for us all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Farber?
Yeah, so Rick was kind enough to announce the retirement of Dr. Bullock from the University of Dubuque, and I have had the privilege and honor of serving on the board and the Executive Committee for almost 25 years, which is the tenure of Jeff Bullock. So I have known him from start to finish, he has also been my neighbor, and I just have to say, there were about 350 people attending, and Mike was also there to hear this wonderful celebration of his experience through an interesting dialogue with various people who came on the stage unbeknownst to Jeff and Dana to toast and roast them. So it was really just delightful, and it is with great appreciation because of all the things he has done, the transition, and just the evolution of the University of Dubuque, and whether it's from the medical side because of the PA program and some other programs, the nursing program, and especially the aviation program, if you will, and computer graphics. So it was just really a wonderful way to salute all that he has done and will continue to do for the university, because he will still be a consultant. And then today, I attended the VNA and their first fundraiser, which was a golf outing, and there were over 34-somes to attend, and it was just great to see the support for the VNA, and everybody that worked for the VNA was out today, and they were on all of the halls, and they were cheering people on, and they were supporting and conversing, and it was just really nice to see the community outreach for them. And then I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Millwork Market, which starts, the evening starts this Thursday, and so it should be a lot of fun, so we look forward to participating there, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Jones?
We did a groundbreaking for the new hotel, a number of us were there, out on Schmidt Harbor, Schmidt Island, adjacent, part of the Q Casino property, that was pretty exciting. I did have a good time with the Days of Caring, wish I could have stayed for more of it, but I had to leave because among the things on our agenda at the Solid Waste Agency was the adoption of a strategic plan that is going to accomplish a lot of things that we've talked about here and elsewhere over the next decade, I suppose. I like to think the next couple of years, but I've been around, as you heard, 50 years. I know that we move a little slower than we'd like to sometimes. I had the honor of delivering remarks on behalf of the city at the Workers' Memorial Day, I guess I won't call that a celebration, last Monday night, but a gathering of folks mourning and honoring the loss of workers in Iowa that have had some difficulty, that have lost their lives, and others who were injured. And last Friday night, Danny was with us, we were at the Training Center for the Hall of Fame Awards, and a number of our debukers, Dennis Bradley, Jesse Colson, Kevin Schmidt is now the mayor of Sageville, we're all among the honorees. Jackie Kennecker was a pioneer in being one of the very first females in law enforcement or other, she worked for the Sheriff's Department for a number of years, became quite a renowned and celebrated investigator, the kind that everybody's going and asking, Jackie, what do you think about this? Or Jackie, could you talk to this guy, I just can't quite get him where I need him? And she tended to be very successful in all of that, plus she baked a bunch of birthday cakes for all the deputies all year long, and that department's bigger than our police department, so that's a lot of cakes. So that was a very impressive night, and here we are tonight, so I'll stop there.
I like how you had to look at your calendar to remember all the things that you're doing, my gosh, it has been busy. Well, I'll just, I'll close this out here before we go to a closed session with just, you know, mentioning, I was able to attend a number of the events that you were able to attend, I had to say no to a number of the events that you attended, some in my place, it's been that busy of a couple of weeks, but just, I want to talk about themes just really briefly, especially with the Growing Sustainable Communities Conference, the Julian Dubuque International Film Festival, and then the University of Iowa Graduate Program, those students that presented the other night, talking about the projects that they've worked on on behalf of the city of Dubuque and with the city of Dubuque staff in the last year, and ideas that they shared with us that I know are going to come back for more discussion because they were very impressive. I'm hearing some things from all these people who are not living here, and they come here to visit and see what we're doing, and there are themes that just stick out, and I know that people would tell me if things were not the greatest, you know, they probably have that to say to me when I'm in these groups, but I hear over and over again that Dubuque is, they're impressed with the innovation that they see here, they're impressed with the way that we figured out how to solve problems, both engineering problems, physical problems, but then also partnership problems and how we can pull those things together. They see us as an exciting place to be, you know, there's always our charm and all these different things, you know, when you come to a city like ours, but they're excited, like genuinely excited to be here, and the one thing that I was really excited to hear from them was how welcoming Dubuque is becoming. And I heard this from people, particularly the University of Iowa students who have studied our city, one of the things that stuck out to them was that we are getting a reputation for being a welcoming community. This is really important, I think, for us to recognize and think about, because something we're doing, the combination of the things that we're doing as a community, and those of us here at this table, but then also at the city staff, you know, as a whole community, we're doing something right, and I hope we can continue to do that. These are really good things, and it's great to hear these perspectives of people who are coming in and looking at us through a totally different lens. They don't, they're not in the weeds like we are every day, they get to see the forest, and I sincerely appreciated that opportunity over the past week. So, we do have a closed session, so I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Jones, oh, sorry.
Before you leave the council member reports, I know Katie didn't mention this, but she did an op-ed for the Telegraph Herald, which was just beautiful, about school violence and about some activities that are going to be taking place over the next several months around that idea, but it was just a beautiful op-ed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike, for pointing that out. All right, Mr. Jones, I heard you.
I move the city council going to closed session in accordance of Chapter 21.5 of the Code of Iowa to discuss pending litigation and purchase or sale of real estate.
Second by Wethel.
Motion by Jones and a second by Wethel. For the record, the attorney of the city council we'll consult with on the issues to be discussed is City Attorney Colonel Brumwell. Adrian, would you call the roll, please?
Jones.
Hi.
Wethel.
Hi.
Farber.
Hi.
Sprank.
Hi.
Resnick.
Hi.
Kavanaugh.
Hi.
Russell.
Hi.
Motion passes seven zero. We are in closed session.